Welcome to the Monday, June 17th, Meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Our first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 3rd meeting?
Don't move.
All right, so we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Are there any corrections or revisions to the minutes? Alderman McCann.
Thanks. Under the reports of, I don't remember if it's standing or select, but the Environmental Sustainability Committee meeting, there was a board vote on the referral to update the special event permit that came from this Environmental Sustainability Committee, and we voted it down to send the issue back to committee for further consideration pending review of the consistency between the paper form and the online form, and I don't think that vote was reflected in the minutes.
Any additional corrections or revisions to the minutes? Seeing none, we will now vote to approve the minutes as amended by Alderman McCann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to public comment, where members of the public are invited to address the Board on matters not on our agenda. Our first person who asks to speak is a representative from the U.S. Committee for Refugees and Immigrants. If you'd step to the podium.
Just came in.
Perfect time. And if you just state your name for the minutes.
I'm the vice president. We're called Mr.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dungus, President of the Board, Michael Talbot, members of the Board of Aldermen, and distinguished guests. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the State Refugee Office, Governor Scott's administration, the state legislature, and Vermont's federal delegation for their continued support for refugee resettlement. Most importantly, I would like to thank the Rutland community, social service providers, faculty and staff of Rutland City Public Schools, healthcare providers, neighbors, who are welcoming our newcomers and helping them to feel a sense of belonging in their new communities. It is truly my honor and the privilege to be with you here tonight and to talk to you about refugee resettlement. More specifically, to talk to you about the successes of refugee resettlement in the past two and a half years and our future plans. I'm happy to let you know that since the reopening of the sub-office in Rutland almost three years ago, we have welcomed 10 Afghan nationals and 16 refugee families from the following countries: Central African Republic, Colombia, Venezuela, Yemen, Nicaragua, and Syria. The federal fiscal year, federal government's fiscal year, is ending in three months. We are expected to welcome six more families, between six and eight more families, before the fiscal year ends. Out of our Rutland office, we provide wraparound services, which includes case management, assistance with accessing housing, both transitional and long-term, access to government services, employment counseling, English language classes, health and wellness support, legal services, interpretation and translation, and community orientation. The goal of the refugee resettlement is early self-sufficiency through employment. So the federal government requires all employable adults aged 18 to 64 to join the workforce Since the opening of the office, we received many inquiries, in particular from local employers who were looking for hard-working and motivated people that we were going to resettle in Rutland. As of today, expecting arrivals in the past, except for the arrivals in the past few weeks, all eligible adults are employed full-time, and many of our teenagers who are in school are also working part-time after school and on weekends. Our employment counselor is working hard on scheduling interviews, working on putting resumes together, and employment counseling, and we have many clients who are looking to work part-time in addition to working full-time. Our current employers include the Rutland Regional, it's quite a list actually, Rutland Regional Medical Center, where our clients are working both in delivery of healthcare and in environmental services. We're fortunate to have clients working at Make It So, McDonald's, Green Mountain Windows, Westminster Cracker, Taco Fresco, Price Chopper, Dunkin' Donuts, Carrara Moving, Central Motorcycles, and so on. Regionally, our clients are also working at Nolado and Omea. Our employment counselor is also building relationships with Janitec, Coca-Cola, Adecco, Midway Oil, and Car Group. You will also hear from some of our employers this evening, and we're grateful to them for taking the time to share their experiences. The opportunity for our clients to start a new life in Rutland, Vermont, is to have access to healthcare, to send their children to school, high-quality schools, to be able to rent clean and safe housing, to be able to work without discrimination, to bring their children to public parks, and be able to walk safely on the streets. And many of these things, many of us take for granted. Rutland City offers all of this and more. As a former refugee from Bosnia who was resettled in Vermont in 1995, and as the first former refugee to lead USCRI field office, I'm personally grateful, grateful to Rutland community. We at USCRI and all other organizations involved in refugee resettlement are putting together a proposal to the federal government for refugee resettlement in the new fiscal year, which starts October 1st. The proposal will go to the Department of State Bureau for Populations, Refugees and Migration, or PRM. In Vermont, we are looking to resettle 350 people through USCRI total. The fiscal year again starts October 1st. For Rutland specifically, we propose to resettle 100 individuals, which equates to about 15 to 20 families over a 12-month period. We will continue to coordinate closely with service providers, Rutland City Public Schools, community health centers of Rutland region, and other medical offices, our local government office, and all key players to ensure the continued success of refugee resettlement in Rutland City. We seek your support as we move forward with our proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions that time allows and determined by your agenda this evening. And also, my team and I are available to you via phone or email. The office is just down the road on North Main Street. I would like to say I'm almost done, I promise. I would like to say a special thank you to our volunteers and community supporters who have been a lifeline for new arrivals and the team in Rutland. My team and I are so grateful for the care and support our clients are shown across the board in Rutland, from teachers, to hospitals, to recreation department. Rutland City is truly a special place. Thank you, Mayor Dungus, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen, and distinguished guests. It's always an honor to be here with you. I would now like to welcome, if the agenda allows, if the time allows, two employers who have graciously offered to be here with us, Jen Usher of Make It So, and Charlie, I'm so sorry, Charlin, Charlie, I can't pronounce your last name, someone who's such a stickler on names, right? And I also have two written statements from local employers, but that's only if time allows.
Yeah, we'd be glad to have people speak if they're here.
Okay, but I would like to give the floor to the other two employers first.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Usher. I own Make It So, dressmaking and tailoring shop on Center Street, and I've been doing that, in that space, for 13 years now. I've had the joy and opportunity of helping many people from different parts of the world start their lives here. I've had employees from the Ukraine, from Ireland, from England, and now from Syria, and I am so grateful to have them. These two women have shown so much joy and so much wonderful work ethic through circumstances that I could only imagine how I would handle, and they have come here with their families to create a life here, and I've become a part of their community. I actually went to their Eid al-Adha celebration last night and ate way too much food. Oh, my gosh. And was sent home with a giant platter of more food that I had for lunch today. And I guess I would just say that I feel like Vermont has so much to offer people. I've grown up here, I've moved away, I've moved back, decided that my life needed to be here, you know, for my family, and I just feel so grateful that we can offer a safe place for people who need it, offer acceptance of people whose religious views, whose cultural views may be a little different from what we're used to, and just be open to it, because it is a beautiful thing to share with new people and create community and be, I don't know, it's like, you just have to meet these folks and get to know them a little bit, and they're just like us. There's nothing different. They speak another language, they're learning ours, I'm learning a little bit of theirs. It's just, and to be honest, as a small business person in a pretty niche job, there aren't that many tailor seamstresses around anymore, to find people who can just come right in, get the job done, I don't have to train them, they know what to do. I gotta tell you, it's been a massive relief for me this year, and I've been able to triple the amount of brides I can take in for the wedding season, and amount of prom dresses, and the amount of just the general things. So, from a business standpoint, it's been really great. So, I just want to say thanks for letting me stand up here and be a little nervous in front of you, and I wish you all well.
Thank you.
I'm Charlie Cofflin. I own two businesses in town, McDonald's and Central Vermont Motorcycles. My story is very similar to yours. Their timing has been great. I've had a few of them for quite a length of time, more than a year. They've come from all over the world. I have Africa, has been one country, six from Syria, and South America. And we've had all the same fun that you've had, the challenges to the different languages, and with some of the, some of the folks, and some of them have been exceptional at their communication skills, which really, really surprised me. They speak very, read and write and speak very well, and they've contributed to the business in a very nice fashion, very good individuals. I'm really kind of surprised, honestly. Punctual, well-groomed, well-prepared, they're on time, they usually have a smile on their face, and it's been a pleasure, because I've had a chance to really learn a little bit more about the world and their particular story, which is remarkable, quite frankly. Their ranges and ages go from like 16 to maybe 20, something like that, but what really surprised me about, they're pleasant, they're great to deal with, but their story is remarkable, and I haven't even got into all of it, but all of them, the Syrians in particular, left their country as refugees 10 years ago, okay, and they lived in a different country all those years before they came here, and they, they don't blink an eye, they never complain, they're a pleasure to deal with, in spite of the challenges that they had. It's been great. The individual from Africa, his language is a little different, a little challenging, and getting him on board was a little bit of a challenge, and his communicating with him has been a little, little different, but it's been, he's right in there, doing a great job, and it's been, it's been fun to do that. The individual, I have one at Central Motorcycles, we have them in the back, in the repair shop, very young, married, and they have a child, and it's been kind of interesting, a little bit of a technical piece there, where all the communication has been through Google Translate. It's great. It actually works really well. So we'll go into the shop, and he'll go to Africa, and we'll have a little conversation back and forth, and I think, you know, he's been with me about eight or nine months, and his communication skills are already better. He's taking classes, and he's picking up the various different customs, and so on and so forth, and again, contributing, getting right in there, and happy to, you know, contribute to the, you know, learning the culture and contributing to the business. And the timing for all these folks have been great, and it's been a pleasure for me to really give them the opportunity to get in there and learn, you know, about this country, and again, to participate and watch them grow and change. So it's been a pleasure, so. Any questions that I can answer anybody, so?
Thank you.
These are quick, I promise. Omea Human Resources, Ethan Zorzy, I think is the last name. I cannot speak highly enough towards the caliber of work performed by the two individuals we have hired. I have had the pleasure of getting to know both of these gentlemen over the past few months. They have both been exemplary employees, often exceeding the production goals set for the shift. Since engaging with USCRI to set up and properly support these families with good-paying local jobs, I have been amazed by the team's ability to go above and beyond. I would ask that the Board consider finding ways to further support this initiative, considering the positive impacts it will continue to have on our community. Omea wishes to expand providing opportunities for refugees. However, our business is out of reach for some due to lack of transportation. If we can find a solution to this issue, we would be able to provide further opportunities to those in this program. Please continue to support USCRI and these families in their journeys. If they're successful, our community and businesses do nothing but grow. Statement from Casey McNeil and McNeil &amp; Reedy. I wanted to take a moment to share some feedback on a gentleman we hired. Since joining our small family business, he has proven to be an invaluable asset to our shop. His hard work and dedication have exceeded all of our expectations, and he has quickly integrated into our small team. His commitment to learning English and improving his communication skills has been impressive, and it has allowed him to connect both with our staff and customers more effectively. Our shop has always provided itself on being, excuse me, prided itself on being a close-knit, family-oriented business, and he has become an integral part of our family. His positive attitude and strong work ethic have only enhanced our operations, but also brought a fresh perspective to our daily routines. We're incredibly thankful for the connection you made, and it has led us to such a wonderful addition to our team. He has had a significant positive impact on our business, and we are truly grateful to have him on our team. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. Alderman Gillum?
I just have a question on your transportation issue with the first employer you just talked about. What was the transportation issue with the employee?
So, the transportation, I believe, is, yes, you're right, Omea. I am not actually sure, sorry about that, I should have asked for clarification.
Where is the business secretary?
It's Billy. It's Omnia.
Omnia. Oh, Omnia, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see any additional questions from the Board, so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate your, next up, we have representatives from Turning Point Center of Rutland. If you'd just step up and state your name for the minutes. Welcome.
My name is Michael.
Aneeshia Phillips.
Sarah Dungus.
Alex Lucci.
Well, first off, by saying thank you for allowing us to come here to let you know about a couple upcoming events that we have coming for the community. I don't know if anyone is unfamiliar with the Turning Point Center and what we do, but we are a peer-based recovery center, and we help people that struggle with substance, opiate and alcohol use disorders, anywhere from youth all the way up to our grandparents. There's no judgment with this disease. So a couple quick things, as our stopping out stigma that we got coming September 7th, we're gonna be having it held at the Meadow Street Park. Stopping out stigma is a great opportunity to help educate the public while also gathering the community together with our community partners, while providing multiple resources for people that don't understand maybe what a community partner has to offer and all the benefits that come with it. It's also a time where we have the educational part of what stigma does, and, you know, stigma does kill people. You know, with using the correct wording and how to help people, where to point them that are struggling, you know, it's also a safe opportunity for those that are to come to the event and seek help. Couple things with it, we got a chili cook-off that's gonna be happening, and we also have a couple singers, we got Johnny Waddell, and we also have Brianna Elaine that's going to be coming and singing at the event. We got different speakers from Jen's Promise, Don Tetro, Louis Nielsen from our correctional program, and myself. Also, we have another event that we are in the midst of getting together, it's for overdose awareness, it's August 31st, and we're looking to hopefully have it at the Depot Park here. Last year, we lost 232 people to this disease, and, you know, it's a, an opportunity for everyone to gather to remember those, because, you know, I'm a person that's in long-term recovery, I struggled with it for 18 years, I am a complete massive case when it came to it, I licked it out, there wasn't one thing. But, you know, recovery is very possible, but also remembering those that we lost is near and dear. You know, these are people's mothers, brothers, fathers, my little cousin I lost last year, you know, and unfortunately, there's also some young children that get caught in the mix of this, and it's a, we just want to bring that to the community, because, you know, with our community partners, we want to be able to gather everyone together and help out the best that we can. We feel that that'd be a great opportunity to bring to the public.
So, our plan for the candlelight vigil is, is we are gonna have candles, we also wanna do an luminary row, so anybody that has, you know, lost somebody to overdose, they can put their names, and we'll light it up along the path, and we're currently working on getting somebody to do a drum beat for every heartbeat, sorry, I get emotional, for every heartbeat of somebody that we lost last year, so it would be 232 drum beats, and then we're also gonna kind of do an overdose awareness, a little bit of education, and really just get people, everybody knows somebody that struggles with SUD, OUD, AUD, or, you know, somebody that knows somebody, so I think it's really important to let people know, and again, to help raise the stigma that is happening here for all of United.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for members of the Board? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great time.
Next, we have representatives from the Rutland County Pride Festival. Welcome.
Hello, I'm William Mills, the Executive Director of Rutland County Pride.
And I'm Sam Davis Boyd, she/her pronouns, co-president of the Board. And we are just here to remind everybody that this Saturday, June 22nd, on Center Street in Merchants Row, is the Second Annual Rutland County Pride Festival from 11 to 5. We start off with a Juneteenth strut led by the NAACP, starting at the Rutland Free Library, right down Center Street into the festival, to celebrate the intersections of the BIPOC and LGBTQ+ community, and we hope folks will come out and support. We have, yeah, over 100 vendors on Center and Merchants, lots of entertainment on the stage throughout the day. Anything else?
Lots of good food, and lots of good wares from vendors, so we invite everybody to come out, participate, and it's gonna be a great day of celebration. We also are doing Pride Prom this year for youth, so we have our youth Pride Prom the night before on Friday night, and that is for youth ages 13 to 18. We're partnering with Partners in Prevention and doing it at the Boys and Girls Club here, and it's actually gonna be a full afternoon of activities for the youth. So we're starting off with a pre-party where youth are able to get their makeup done, their hair done, and get dressed, and celebrate, and all that, and with that process, everybody gets, that's partaking in that, gets to take their, the wares home, so we have makeup and brushes and all that, so the kiddos can take stuff home and have it to use in the future. And then we're moving into the Boys and Girls Club, where we'll have dinner, which is being donated by multiple restaurants up in Killington, so each restaurant has decided to donate their signature dish, and so that there'll be lots of great eats, and then we're going to go into the rest of the prom, where we have, instead of a rainbow carpet or a red carpet, we're having a rainbow carpet, where the youth will walk down and get their pictures taken by a professional photographer, and then we're gonna go in and just have the night of celebration and dancing. So, it should be a lot of fun, and we thank you all for working with us and making it possible.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Susan Strieman, project manager for the Creek Path.
Well, over a decade ago, I got a call from a wonderful woman who asked me how much a bridge costs, and I thought she was kidding. I asked her to come in. She, thanks to her, and Rutland Regional Medical Center, and some other private donors, that bridge is gonna be installed on July 1st. It's 145 foot long, 12 foot wide, and I wanted to let everyone know that July 1st, about 11 o'clock, weather-dependent, that bridge will be installed. It's coming in the end of June on tractor-trailers, two pieces, that will be assembled and then lifted with cranes by Belden, and placed over the abutments that they've constructed, so, over East Creek. So it will be a spectacular sight and a really wonderful event, so please come and check this out.
Great. Thank you for inviting us. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the Board on items not on our agenda? Step right up and state your name for the minutes.
Hi, everybody, I'm Lopee LaRoe. I'm a local resident. Man, what a wonderful community we have, isn't it? I just, I feel like I'm here on the right night. Can really resonate with everything. I just wanted to do two things. One is to read a statement from my friend Bianca Zanella in support of the Road Diet. It's very short, she just said, "I, Bianca, support the redesign as it prioritizes pedestrian and bicycle safety, and cities designed around cars do not support longevity or community." And she lives in the neighborhood, she lives on Edgerton, I'm not gonna say her address, but she is definitely a pedestrian, we're all pedestrians, I mean... We're all pedestrians. I mean, let's be real. But she's a biker and she, like, she walks her dog, you know, she's, she's definitely a pedestrian often. The other thing that I wanted to speak on and ask about is something that's been kind of up for me for a couple of years. Is noticing that the Center Street Marketplace Park, it says on their website that it's supposed to be open, the gates are supposed to be unlocked from 7:00 AM till 10:00 PM. And every single time I try to walk through there, the gate is locked on the Wales Street side, and I don't know why this is. And I find it quite irritating when I'm being a pedestrian and I think other people like to take that nice walk through the park. And it is, it is our commons, you know, it's part of the public domain, and I don't understand why it's locked.
I think I can answer that.
Thank you.
The Wales Street access point is through private property.
Right.
There is no public egress to the Wales Street gate.
Private property. Who owns that?
I think several people own that. There's an easement on that driveway that backs up to the Paramount, so we couldn't open that gate to the public and invite the public to pass through private property. That is the reason that gate gets locked.
Well, how edifying is that? Thank you so much. And that is all I have to say then.
Thank you.
And I also support the road diet, but you guys know that because I was here last time talking.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board? Step right up and just state your name.
My name is Patrick Griffin. I'm a city resident. I just wanted to share my support for trying the road diet trial on Woodstock Ave. I know change is often hard for us to picture. I know it is for me. But I think it's at least worth trying when safety's really the paramount issue here. I'm a licensed professional civil engineer. Transportation engineers are taught, one of the primary objectives of road design is trying to get travelers to their destinations as quickly as possible. It's a good goal. We all like efficiency. And the goal's great for interstate highways where exits are purposely one mile apart. But that same thought process, when it's made the only or the primary objective instead of one of many being balanced, just doesn't apply great to local roads that go through our community. There are many downsides when we try to apply that same methodology to our local roads. The exits are not spaced a mile apart. They're spaced 100 feet apart for every driveway. The drivers are changing lanes aggressively to avoid turning vehicles. And other drivers find it hard to pull onto the road from driveways because of the speed and the lane changing of those drivers that are on the road. I don't imagine that there's a consensus in this room for a Rutland bypass that was talked about decades ago. I don't think most of us would want that. We want travelers to pass through our community, to use our businesses, and to see what we have to offer. For exactly that reason, we also don't want them to pass through as quickly as possible and to go slower, which can only improve their use of our businesses. We also don't want them to have an accident in our community, nor do we want our citizens to have accidents. And one of the reasons this road diet has been proposed is the likelihood that it will reduce accidents. It's a trial. We're going to see. There's going to be data at the end, is my understanding. This may be an experiment, but I don't think we're being used as guinea pigs by V-Trans. This same road diet idea has been used throughout the state and the country and has been found successful. Woodstock Ave is our unique road, but it's not so unique that the same principles that have worked elsewhere and been successful are not also worth trying here. It's about 1.2 miles from Gleeson Road to Route 7, the section that's within the city. Assuming you hit no red lights, unlikely, and you go at 45 miles per hour, you'll cover this distance in about 96 seconds. If you traveled at 25 miles per hour, it would take 173 seconds, a little over a minute longer. It will be slightly slower. That is by design, obviously. But given the slower speed may reduce the chance that you are in accident or someone else you know is, plus the fact that you might be sitting at a red light anyway, I think it is worth giving it a try. So, I would just like to put my support behind the trial. That's all I really want to give my support for. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board? Step right up.
I'm Larry Walter. I live up on Belmont Avenue, up in the northeast part of town. I was, well, actually watching one of my favorite comics the other day, and they were actually interviewing people in downtown Boston, Celtics fans. And of course, most of them were Bostonians and their, their language was fairly salty, especially regarding the other team. And then the last guy that came up, he says, "I'm a big Celtics fan and I don't have anything against the other team, but I hope we win." And then it flashed back to the host and he said, "He must be from Vermont." And that's sort of our, that's our, you know, that's our identity. I mean, that's, we're nice people. And you hear that from all over. I mean, from people that visit from out west or whatever. It's like, boy, these people are so nice. With regards to the road diet, right now, what people see when they go through the town and, you know, they don't have a bypass to rely on, they're nozzled down into Rutland, and three out of the four directions, what do you see? What do you see when you're entering town? What sign do you see?
No biking on the road.
No biking, right. Three out of the four directions, so I figure it's going to make our town look a lot friendlier if we only have one of those, and that's on South Main, which is a basket case anyway. You know, you're just going to have to bounce up the sidewalk in there. But the other two will be vastly friendlier and safer and a lot more enjoyable. And yes, I do intend to use that bike lane a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on our agenda?
Hi there. I just wanted to address one just as my perspective as a pedestrian.
Just state your name for the minutes.
And I'm Teresa Haywood. So, I walk to work on North Main Street, and there's a particularly very dangerous part of my, my walk where when I get to cross from the corner that is the former Beverage King, where nothing's been there for a long time, just past Grand Union to go to, you know, where Jiffy Lube is. Right at that point, as soon as the pedestrian walkway, which is hidden by a power pole, the utility pole, as soon as you get the pedestrian go-ahead, that's the same time that all the people in the right-hand lane get to get their green arrow to go. And then not to mention the people who are turning from Woodstock Avenue get to take a right on red. So, it's just, I'm dodging, I'm stopping, I'm waiting, you know, and that's just my trip to work and back. And another perspective is that they also, there's also no other crossing except for Crescent Street. So, the whole way, all the way down, that's the last one on all of North Main Street. And I'm closer to, you know, Ace Hardware, so. And my other perspective I just thought I'd share, I'm just really excited about the Woodstock Avenue bike lane because I'm really excited about kids getting able, being able to bike to high school. And if anyone's ever tried it from Stratton Road, I don't recommend it. That hill is way too intense and there's also no, no room if you're in that lane going up that hill going to school. So, I'm really excited about that. So, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on items not on our agenda? Just step right up and state your name for the minutes.
Hi, my name is Gina Grove. I am a resident on Bellevue Avenue. I moved here from Annapolis, Maryland, actually, August 1st of last year. And in that time, I've witnessed a number of interesting traffic interactions. We have two dogs. We walk our dogs regularly, multiple times a day. While this is not part of the road diet, but I know that our block is probably a popular cut-through. Both my husband and I have almost been hit by a car who did not stop. I watched him almost be hit by a car who did not stop. One had local plates, one had out-of-state plates. I have seen multiple vehicles who avoid the red light approaching the Woodstock Route 7 intersection to cut through the Beverage King empty lot blatantly ignoring red lights. I will say that Vermonters seem to like to run red lights. I will say that. That is one thing that I have noticed. And that's on everybody, but it has surprised me on a number of occasions, not just missing the light, but blatantly running it. I drove here. I would have liked to have walked. My roast chicken wasn't quite done. I would have liked to have biked. I don't feel safe biking that far, and I feel really silly when I could have biked or walked to drive that far, especially gas prices are what they are and mileage is what it is. If I can save some money or if I can exercise and do that and enjoy town, I will do that. I have driven down West Street multiple, multiple, dozens of times. One time, I decided to walk to the farmer's market and walking back up the hill on my way to my house, I noticed multiple businesses that I didn't catch my eye when I was driving. And I've partaken in those businesses now because I walked and I was like, I noticed them. So, I feel that supportive of the road diet, the safety for options of transportation, the option for people to walk if they want to walk, the option for people to bike if they can bike, if they can save money by not having to purchase a car, which is a huge expense, a huge monthly expense, especially when our economy is what it is. If we can save that, I very much support the option to try what this could do for our community. And I appreciate being part of a community that's willing to accommodate all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on items not on our agenda?
I'm Dave Kopica, resident of Rutland City. And I just have some, just a real brief synopsis here of crash data. From January 1st of, or January of 2010 to June of 2024, there have been a total of 383 crashes on Woodstock Avenue. 109 side swipes, which kind of, you know, goes along with the, what commonly happens with the, you know, the four-lane configuration. A lot of side swipes. There's 105 rear-end collisions, which also, you know, is, you would expect with that, given the current configuration. And 120 broadside accidents. And there were 89 injuries during that period. So, just, just to sort of reinforce what's been said tonight, it's certainly, given the, the, the status quo, is it definitely more dangerous situation than going to the road diet? Clearly, it's safer and traffic engineers and data will tell you as much. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public comment? If not, we'll close public comment and move to communications from the mayor. Anybody who wants to leave is welcome to do so now. Everyone is invited to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but this is a good opportunity to step out if you wish to.
Is it out of clear room?
I guess. All right. Good evening. Okay, I'm going to start off with information I got. Just a few minutes ago, there has been an official rabid raccoon bite in Rutland City. So, it's officially a rabid raccoon. Please just be aware when you're taking out your trash or you're outside in your yards, if you see a raccoon, just avoid. I don't know the specific location, but just be aware that, you know, we have rabid raccoon report. Just figured that was timely enough to, to share. In the city, it is the end of our fiscal year, so we have about two weeks left in June. You've got your May report from Mary, I believe, this evening. That's going to kind of give you the 11-month outlook on where we're at. In our department head meeting this morning, we discussed the main, the main thing, which is as we come through these last two weeks, to keep the spend as low and as tight as possible, to stay within budget and below. We already know that the police department will land over budget probably for the first time in God knows how many years. But because of that, we need to make sure we're extra careful because our overtime has been there. We want to, we want to be as low and as tight as possible on our budget, so that has been shared this morning. Another thing that happened this morning, Bill H. 687, the veto was overridden. 687 is the housing bill. This is the one that's really, really good for Rutland. While our representatives, Mary Howard and Will Knott supported this bill from the beginning, our representatives Paul Clifford and Eric McGuire actually stepped out of party lines and voted yes on the override as well as on the bill to really, you know, show their support for Rutland. This is something that has done, that, that is, is going to allow us to develop the way we need to. And I just want to say thank you to everybody in Montpelier that supported that passing because our city will benefit in a huge way from that. In conjunction with 687 passing, we've been discussing internally, myself, city engineer Ted Gillan, Ed Boe from the RA, what we can do in line with those things to incentivize housing development in Rutland. I know that we already have the water incentive program referred to committee, but I'd also like to talk, to refer to committee wastewater, water and wastewater permits for discussion as well. We want to talk about how we can leverage those. We've got a plan that we're putting together. We'd like to show to the Board of Aldermen about what we can do for some incentives to help housing get developed here in Rutland. So, if it pleases the board, I'd like to refer water, wastewater permits and incentives to community and economic development.
Alderman Gillum?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer discussion of water and wastewater permits and incentives to public works.
I have public works.
Will, we can send it to public works afterwards, I think, because it's going to be an incentive program. I think CED is probably the best place.
What is the board's, what was your motion to refer to?
I was going to refer to public works. Sorry.
So, that was seconded. Do you wish to stick with your original motion or amend it?
Yes.
You'll stick with your original motion? Yeah, and that's been seconded? All right. Any discussion or debate on the motion to refer water, wastewater permits and incentives to public works? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
That works for me, by the way. I have no problem where it goes. Thanks, Bill. So, the, thank you for, thank you for that. Moving on, as the Pride Center mentioned, Pride Festival is this weekend. I just wanted to say thank you for, to Tyler Richardson from my office. He's been working with them on a lot of the logistics. So, last year, we had a couple of different issues with parking. He's helping get, getting that straightened out. And then I will be there and I will be doing the proclamation of Pride Month at, at the event as well. I want to talk about something that's pretty big that's been happening. So, for about the past year, we've been talking with the Beldons about the potential of a hotel at the Burwick site. The discussions have been going on for a significant period of time. They have worked on drawings and conceptual designs and trying to put together a capital staff to make this project happen. Over the past two weeks, those discussions have accelerated greatly. And I believe that in the, in short order, we're going to have to make some decisions on how the city wants to support the Beldons as we move through that process. I've had great conversations with them. I understand what they need. And from a standpoint of making sure that this hotel happens, there may be some things that the city needs to do. Everything from investment in Center Street in Wales to potentially tax stabilization, which they may be looking to ask us for their support on. So, with that, I would like to have the board, I would like to recommend that the board send to committee the discussion of the Burwick Hotel site and the projects that will be aligned with that to community and economic development.
All those in the clear?
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion to refer discussion of a potential Burwick Hotel to the Community and Economic Development Committee. It's been seconded. Discussion or debate on the referral. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Uh, hang on one second. It's okay. So, lastly, I'd like to request, during addition and deletions to the agenda, I'd like to request an executive session to discuss a matter of security. So, this falls under VSA, the VSA Section 10 of the executive session, a matter of security. Megan, can you give us?
It's 1 VSA Section 313A10 under security.
Thank you for being more specific. I appreciate that. We'll get an update from a police chief on an event that's going to be happening in Rutland, and we just want to talk about the security aspects of that event.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion on any of that? Awesome. Thank you very much for taking the time. Have a good meeting.
All right. Moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda, we have the mayor's request to add an executive session to discuss a matter of security.
So moved.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to add that to the end of our agenda. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, we have Assistant Engineer Gillen with a request for a resolution of support for a Vtrans small-scale bicycle and pedestrian grant application. There's a memo and supporting documents on pages one to four of your packet. Welcome.
Good evening. Yeah, the scope of work for this project basically consists of replacing sidewalk on Church Street from Library Avenue to Seaberry Street, the west side of the street. Sidewalk in terrible condition, right up against the school. There's no green space. People park there. People park all over the sidewalk. Uh, exposed utility poles. I can't stand it personally. And I also can't stand that Seaberry Street has a disconnect in the sidewalk. What little sidewalk is there is in horrendous condition. So with your support, we'd be able to, and if awarded the grant, I'd basically use in-kind services, have public works go in, replace the sidewalk, reestablish the green belt, um, and then basically just submit for $75,000, which is the maximum amount. So, I mean, I'm hard-pressed to do this project anyways. Um, so I think this grant would just be a bonus. And then subsequent years, just keep circling the school, pick sidewalk on Grove Street, change the block from Crescent down to, to Park Avenue, maybe all the way down to Library. That's a big eyesore. And then we've got the Library Avenue sidewalk on the south side of the street that has seen better days as well.
Alderwoman Tadde?
Um, I would make a motion to circulate for signature, a resolution of-
We need to suspend the rules.
Oh, yes. Motion to suspend the rules.
Second, a second.
All right. We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And now I would make a motion to circulate for signature, a resolution of support for the Vermont Trans Small Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant Application.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to circulate for signatures. The resolution, it's been seconded. Alderman Gillen?
I, I think the people at home need to understand what's going on here. If anybody goes to the middle school or the intermediate school and they stack up on Church Street, the residents are really, really upset down there because it's too late, it's too wide cars going down the street. You got some in the street, some in the parking area. This is a great opportunity to clean that hall up and make it look really good and safety for those kids to get to those schools on a decent sidewalk. This is a long time coming and neighborhood has always asked what we're gonna do about that. The time has come. So I need your support on this.
Alderwoman Davis?
So, um, Ted, I think some of the problem is, is, um, well, there's just no parking. A lot of the teachers park on the, on the street. So when the parents go to pick up the kids, there's no place to park. And so they double park and they're parked on the sidewalk. So is a curb going to occur to help prevent that or no? We're just, it is. Okay, good.
Yeah, a curb and then green space separated.
Right. I mean, I think it's another thing, and it's not our thing, that the school needs to start thinking about where they're gonna park their teachers. So-
No, exactly.
So families, parents can find a place to pick up their children.
We've initiated those conversations. Even as recent as this morning, I've met with somebody from their building and grounds department.
Okay.
On the site, we've gone over a variety of issues down there.
Lotteries.
And that, that being one of them. And I said, we'd lend a hand to walk the site with them, take a couple of measurements, see what we can do to get parking off the street. You know, I think there's room with a little effort. They've talked about pulling up their fences, their chain link fence and replacing them. And so we've made little suggestions here and there, like, you know, you move it a little bit this way, you might be able to get angled parking. Maybe you have one way through this, the weird little corridor that goes through. Maybe change that to one way and try to circulate the parents onsite. So we've initiated this conversation. That's gonna be all part of this, this project.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Any additional comments? Alderwoman McCann?
Thanks. Uh, can you help me understand the, the finance part of it? So you've got that it's a $225,000 project overall. You're looking for a $75,000 grant. I assume it would be labor, like, that would be the match to that. So we've got a $150,000 project towards a $225,000 need. So was the idea, you're looking for a grant just to kinda do a part of it and then like you'd be looking for a grant again later? Or is there another piece of money here that I'm missing?
I'm not sure I understand exactly what you're asking, but basically with some of these projects, they're very similar to the project that we did on Pier Point Avenue. Same grant. Uh, with some of those projects, you can use what they call a force account, which is just, you know, interdepartmental efforts. And that goes towards you. So we could have done a project for 150, got the maximum amount of 750 or 75, anything above that. Maybe don't give more credit for it, but what I wouldn't necessarily hire this out, um, hire out to a contractor. I'd just like to see our guy personally. So it's, basically it's no additional cost to the city. It's just paying our guys for the labor equipment costs, things like that.
You are, you are doing the full $225,000 project. You're just getting a $75,000 bonus towards it. Okay.
Yeah.
Alderman Gillen?
Um, the school's also putting something into this, like moving the fence and stuff on their property and coming up with maybe a parking plan for part of that property to get every teachers off the road. So that's not part of this project. That's-
That's not, that's not part of it, but we recognize that.
Right.
You know, I mean, they're overwhelmed with cars everywhere. So we're just gonna work with them, provide them some advice here and there to-
Great.
Alderwoman McClure?
I just have a question on how this may tie into a Safe Roots to School program in the future. Has any discussion been had with the RRPC about that at this point?
Yes. Yes. Uh, a little bit. I mean, I have other ideas for Safe Roots to Schools. There's certainly plenty of issues, uh, over in them now, but I mean, I talked to the school this morning. Like I said, I said, any, talk to your crossing guards, any particular areas that you have issues with, uh, safety concerns, you know, let me know and we'll, we'll work that into the, the grand plan. So I just didn't wanna miss up, miss out on this opportunity. I didn't wanna wait for the Safe Route to Schools. I've been thinking about this for six years. So-
Definitely.
Kinda just wanted to act on it quick.
Definitely. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor to, uh, circulate for signatures, a resolution of support for the Vtrans small-scale bicycle and pedestrian grant application. Any additional discussion or debate? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
Absolutely.
Uh, a few meetings ago, I asked for your support on a Class 1, uh, highway grant and a Vermont community tree planting grant for Cottage Street and Justice Square. We received both grants, $100,000, give or take for door drive, and $75,000 for the Cottage Street.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent. Next, we have Chief Kilt Cullen with a request to issue an RFP to replace the rooftop, uh, HVAC units at the police station. There's a memo and supporting documents on pages five to 37 of your packet.
Hi, thanks for your time tonight. It seems like we've been speaking about our HVAC system for years, but it's a, really become a hot topic. No pun intended. So this request is, is to put an RFP out to replace two, uh, rooftop units. Uh, I've attached a copy of a report, um, from the Municipal, uh, Energy Resilient, Resilience Program, I think it's, MRR, uh, Municipal Energy Resilience Program, that, uh, we participated in last year. Uh, in that report, uh, page 22 specifically talks a lot about the need to replace our rooftop units. So you may remember during the discussion about allocating ARPA funds, uh, there was an appropriation of about 150,000, I think, for the police department to upgrade our, our, our system controls. That was really the first step that we had to go through to really assess the, um, condition of the rest of our, uh, our HVAC systems. So we did that. It actually came in quite a bit less than we anticipated. Unfortunately, that money was reallocated to the Board of Finance, uh, to replace a couple of vehicles when we experienced, uh, a loss of a couple of vehicles last summer, if you remember. Um, but nonetheless, the, uh, controls, the systems were upgraded. And in terms of the HVAC system itself, uh, we were in pretty decent shape. Um, the building, you know, and this report gets into the assessment of the entire building, but the HVAC system itself was in decent shape. But the rooftop unit specifically, uh, I think described as at the end of their useful life. Um, and so we've been trying to, uh, kinda put a Band-Aid on them as long as we could. But recently, we've experienced some, some failures and we've incurred some sizable repair expenses. Uh, and at this point, um, I think it's necessary to look, to replace those units. We've been working with, uh, to the extent we can, working with Efficiency Vermont to talk to them about, um, some options. This report also gets into potentially replacing those units with, um, electric heat pumps. And so, but again, you know, at this point, we do, we do need to replace those units. It's two rooftop units. Uh, if you look at the report, there was an estimated cost of about 136,000. We actually had a, um, an estimate from our vendor for about 127. So I think it's a pretty, a pretty good number, um, probably in 130,000 range from what we can tell right now. But we don't know until we put an RFP out. And once we get those back, we can evaluate those. So my request is to, uh, put that RFP out.
Alderwoman Davis?
Um, do you wanna motion on the floor first before you?
Sure.
Uh, so I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval, uh, for the RFP for the HVAC system at the police station.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the request to issue the RFP. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Alderwoman Davis?
So if I may, do we have any idea funding, um, where we're gonna take it from or what we've got?
So we don't know yet. Um, there's currently three avenues that we're looking at. One is, um, Johnson Controls is doing evaluation across the board of all of our city buildings for, for part of that performance contract that could be a, an option. Um, this information will help them look at that, uh, as part of their project. So that's option one. Option two is that municipal, that municipal energy resiliency program, um, should be, uh, they should be releasing the public grant process for projects soon. So that could be an option as well. And then the third would be that it would need to come out of a, a budget line or, or something of that nature.
What about ARPA? There's still money left?
There's still, but I don't think it's enough to cover the cost of this.
There was over 300,000 last weekend.
The, uh, encumbered, I believe we only have 40 or 50, uh, unencumbered funds left in ARPA at the moment. The, um, if there's more, we can certainly, we can certainly look at that as an option. I believe there's only like 50,000. I think the other piece is getting, as Chief said, understanding what it's gonna cost to replace these units is gonna be the big piece. So once we have that number, we can try to find more ways to allocate funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any additional discussion, debate, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve their request to issue an RFP?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Chief. Next on the agenda is the Treasurers Report for the City and RRA for the period ending May 31st. As Treasurer Markowski is not present, uh, I entertain a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Gotcha.
All right. Any discussion or debate on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to reports of standing committees. First we have Alderman McCann with a report from the Charter and Ordinance Committee meeting of June 4th. There's a copy of the report on pages 38 to 39.
Thank you. The June 4th, uh, Charter and Ordinance Committee meeting. Uh, committee members present were board members Barbigallo, McCann, Gillum, Savage, and Board President Talbot. Others in attendance were Mayor Dungus, board members Davis and McClure, Attorney LaChance, Chief Levitt, Zoning Administrator Janisti, Ed Boe from the RRA, and Stephen Box. Board member Whitcomb participated by phone. Meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss two referrals, the listing of agenda items for the Board of Aldermen meetings and the short-term rental ordinance. Board member McCann began by presenting a draft proposal for an update to Rule 5 of the Rules and Order of Business of the Board of Aldermen of Rutland City. Rule 5 defines the order of business, commonly referred to as the agenda, for Board of Aldermen meetings. Clarification was made that these rules of order and business are not themselves part of the city charter or its ordinances, but that they are under the purview of the Charter and Ordinance Committee per Rule 9, and that they may be amended only by an affirmative vote of two-thirds of all elected board members and with approval from the mayor. The substantive changes, suggested changes include identifying modification of the agenda as the first act of business to ensure compliance with 1 VSA subsection 312 of the Vermont statutes. Uh, and then two was including consideration of special event permits directly after communications from the mayor. Currently, this item is considered under petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. However, it's commonly moved up in the agenda. Making this change is expected to minimize changes to future agendas. Suggestions were also made to ensure other regular items of the agenda were reflected in Rule 5. Board member Barbigallo made a motion to approve and change Rule 5 such that the order of business would be as follows. Number one, pledge of allegiance. Number two, additions, deletions, or other modifications to the agenda. Number three, amendment and approval of the minutes of previous meetings or meetings. Number four, public comment, or the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters not on the agenda. Number five, communications with the mayor. Number six, considerations of special event permit requests. Number seven, reports and letters from department heads and officials. Number eight, reports of standing committees. Number nine, reports of select committees. Number 10, reports of representatives. Number 11, petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. Number 12, Board of Control Commissioners. Number 13, Board of Cannabis Commissioners. Number 14, unfinished business. And then number 15, miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. All questions on priority will be decided without debate. The motion passed forward zero. And I so move.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to change Rule 5 of the Board of Aldermen rules. It's been seconded. Discussion or debate? Alderman Heck?
Um, so in the past, the, uh, the additions and deletions were left after the mayor, um, communications from the mayor. So if, during the course of the week, mayor had something that he couldn't get on the agenda, he had a place to kinda move forward and, and look at placing that on there. So I would just, you know, look at it in the sense, you know, if the mayor's, uh, okay with making sure that his, his agenda, whatever items he's gonna talk about, he's not gonna have a opportunity to add anything. And he wants to, uh, he wants to move that up. I understand the need for, um, you know, when there's special events, uh, permits come through and stuff, we don't want the folks to be waiting around too long. But there was a reason why it was placed, um, after communications there as far as that goes. So if there's something important that needed to be added, it, it could be done so. So I'm just throwing it out there that, um, I'm not quite sure if I feel comfortable with it going before that, but, uh, I understand how the board wants to move forward. That would be fine.
Um, at an open meeting law training that some of the board members attended with the Secretary of State last year, her office made it clear to us that we were out of compliance with state statute by not having additions and deletions to the agenda at the top of the agenda. That was the impetus for exploring this. Any additional discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks. Uh, discussion then turned to consideration needs and considerations related to short-term rentals or STR ordinance. Items of concern that those present would like to see addressed include ensuring STR properties receive adequate inspection and documentation of health and safety code compliance, ensuring accountability and availability of hosts or identified property managers, accounting for parking concerns, including the ability of fire department equipment to reach structures, managing the impacts of STR use on neighborhood characteristics, availability of a range of logistical and safety information to guests, ensuring that appropriate taxes are collected, maintaining accurate inventory of STRs and addressing concerns related to their impact on long-term rentals, identifying meaningful responses to and penalties for non-compliance, and ensuring STR operators have appropriate insurance. In further consideration of STR ordinance, several suggestions were made to improve the process and help ensure success, which included looking for successful examples in communities similar to Rutland, partnering with industry experts and local STR organizations to provide factual information and informed insight on ordinance needs and impacts, targeted inclusion of Rutland City STR operators in the discussion, and ensuring adequate understanding of requirements already imposed by STR registration platforms, for example Airbnb or VRBO, and insurance policies. No motions were made on this issue and it remains in committee for further consideration. The meeting was adjourned at 6:46 PM.
Very good. Alderman McCann's up again with a report from the Charter and Ordinance Committee meeting of June 11th. There's a copy on page 40.
Thank you. Committee members present, uh, were board members Barbigallo, McCann, Tadde, Savage, and board member, or Board President Talbot. Others in attendance were board members Davis, McClure, and Whitcomb, Mayor Dungus, City Engineer Gillen, Police Chief Kilt Cullen, City Attorney LaChance, Planning and Zoning Administrator Janisti, and Ed Boe from the RRA. Meeting was called to order at 5:31 PM. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss a green belt parking ordinance as well as a road and driveway ordinance. Several concerns were raised regarding the use of green belt, uh, for parking cars. This includes damage to or premature failure of city infrastructure landscaping, erosion and stormwater runoff issues, degraded neighborhood aesthetics, and safety hazards. Board member Davis, Davis inquired as to whether the issue had previously been addressed. While the issue has been discussed multiple times, it did not appear that any action had been taken to address the issue outside of certain explicit locations or conditions. For example, Title 27, Chapter 3, Subchapter 13, Subsection 5041 generally prohibits parking in the green belt along North and South Main Street and Woodstock Avenue, but nowhere else. Uh, discussion included existing parking schedules and the authority that lies with the police chief to identify where parking may be restricted. Although this would not address the green belt parking concern, it was no- Although this would not address the green belt parking concern, it was noted that a street-by-street reconsideration of these schedules in coordination with the fire chief and a representative from DPW would be a component of a citywide parking discussion. No motion was suggested, as the police chief already has authority to modify the parking schedules per Title 27, Chapter 3, Subchapter 15 of the ordinances. Subsections, or sorry, Title 27, Chapter 3, Subsection 9, Subchapter 9, Subsection 4937, and Subchapter 13, Subsections 5041 and 5045 were noted as being related to the issue and could be amended to address the concern. Board member Tadio made a motion to amend the Rutland City ordinances to prohibit parking in the Green Belt with the caveat that the appropriate location in the ordinance and language for this prohibition would be identified by the city attorney. The motion passed 4-0, and before I move, I have a comment, if I can find my other notes. So yeah, Attorney LaChance has provided the board with a suggested location and ordinances in the suggested language to address this motion. I'd suggest that if the board would prefer reconsideration of the location or language, I believe we could vote this motion down and send it back to committee for further discussion. I'll also note that if the board decides to approve this motion with Attorney LaChance's suggested language, the updated ordinance would go into effect after proper notice in the newspaper and the associated 20-day review period. If the board would prefer to specify a different timeline for implementation, again, I would suggest voting down the motion and sending it back to committee for specification of a different implementation timeline. If that, or with that, I'd ask Attorney LaChance to share her thoughts on the suggestion, and not suggesting we vote it down, I just want to let people know that if we approve it tonight, it will go forward with a pretty short time.
Yeah, so the reason Alderman McCann is bringing this up too, there was some debate in the meeting as well of other things that would have to change along with this ordinance, because if you all of the sudden ban parking on the green belt areas, that moves cars into the streets, and as you mentioned, there's a lot of coordination and different things that would have to come into play in terms of where cars would then park. So it will end up affecting potential alterations and changes to other ordinances as well, and coordinating with Chief Kilkellin and others on making this happen and logistically work well, and they've expressed a need for some amount of time to do that. If this proposed language were to be adopted today and posted into the newspaper tomorrow and noticed that way, it would be 21 days, and then this would then be in effect, and those other pieces might not yet be in play and would still fall behind that. So there was some thought to coordinating a timeline on that.
Thank you. So with that, I'd move to the board approve the motion that was approved by the committee.
So, or second?
Can you clarify that motion again?
Yeah, so basically with the language in hand from Attorney LaChance, the motion was made to amend the Rutland City ordinances to prohibit parking in the Green Belt. And then the caveat was that we would get this language from Attorney LaChance, which we have, so if the board votes to approve that motion, it would be to put this in the newspaper for notice tomorrow, and then 21 days from now, it would go into...
If I could just ask that you read the specific language from the attorney?
Oh, yes, gotcha. Okay, so the suggestion was to go into subsection 5041, which is stopping, standing, or parking prohibited, no signs required. A, no person shall stop, stand, or park a vehicle except where necessary to avoid conflict with other traffic or in compliance with law or the directions of a police officer or traffic control device in any of the following places. Existing ordinance would stay the same except down to that subpart 15, which currently reads as between the sidewalk and the traveled portion of the highway, North Main Street, South Main Street, and Woodstock Avenue, provided however that when adverse weather conditions necessitate during the period from the first day of December to the 31st day of March, persons may stop, stand, or park vehicles in said area with the written permission from the chief of police. The changed language for that item would be between the sidewalk and the traveled portion of any highway, over the edge of a curb, or within the city's right-of-way inclusive of green space immediately adjoining the traveled portion of the highway, provided however that when the adverse weather conditions necessitate during the period from the first day of December to the 31st day of March, persons may stop, stand, or park vehicles in said area with the written permission of the chief of police.
Okay. Was there a second?
Second.
All right, so to summarize, I think the motion is to amend Rutland City ordinances 5041, A15 to prohibit parking over the edge of a curb or within the city's right-of-way inclusive of green space immediately adjoining the traveled portion of the highway. That's the new language. All right, discussion or debate on the motion? Alderman Davis?
Just a question, I don't have a problem with the ordinance, but we talked about moving cars into the street, and we talked about still having to have the discussion of the parking ban, the winter parking ban, and how, how do we want to deal with that, because it is an issue for DPW, we don't have clean streets if they cannot plow. So I guess my question would be to the city attorney, is if we accept that language, does it move us into a relief of the winter parking ban?
So it could, but it wouldn't be an automatic relief of it. There would still be some tweaking of language that would need to be done in the ordinances regarding the winter parking ban, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
Right, I'm just saying, you know, because I don't support getting rid of the winter parking ban at this time. I think that's a continued conversation that needs to be had, whether we limit it to only a snow event type of thing and find a way to notify the public, but I still think that the public works, still has to be able to clean a street. So I don't want to pass that little bit of language and then have 42 cars lined up on Baxter Street the next time it snows, because there's no place for them to go. So that's my only dilemma. So I'm trying to understand, if I vote yes on this, will it change the winter parking ban? Because that discussion really has not been had.
So it will not change the winter parking ban?
That's all I'm asking.
Alderman Tadio?
Well, plus you would have to get the written permission of the chief of police per this language to void the winter parking ban, so I think your concerns are covered.
Any additional discussion or debate on the motion? All right, so to sum, to reiterate, the motion is to amend Rutland City ordinances 5041, A15 with the language provided by Attorney LaChance. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. There was then discussion on the logistics of rolling out the new ordinance language in additional meeting, that would provide a more robust opportunity for the public to hear the proposed change and provide public comment was suggested. It was also noted that there have been numerous meetings on this issue over several years, and those meetings represented opportunities for public input. Administrator Stanishti noticed that he would prefer to see this change rolled out as part of a consolidated ordinance related to driveways, roads, and sidewalks. The discussion then turned to the need for an ordinance related to driveways. While the DPW has an internal policy that guides its approach to the identification and construction of curb cuts and driveway aprons, there is an interest in developing an ordinance that provides more clarity and formalizes the process beyond an internal policy. Administrator Stanishti will collaborate with DPW staff as needed to develop a draft for review by the committee at a future meeting. This topic will remain in committee for further discussion. Meeting was adjourned at 6:25 PM.
All right. Moving on to reports of representatives, we have none. Reports of select committees, we have Alderman McClure with the Human Resources Committee report from June 13th, and I believe that was emailed.
Yes, and it should be in everybody's email. Hold these up here. The Human Resources Committee met on June 13th, 2024. Aldermen present were Chair McClure, Alderman Davis, Alderman Tadio. Others present were Mayor Dungus, Board President Talbot, Attorney LaChance, Ellen Coyle from the HR Department, Alderman Barbogallo, and Director Dolan from Rutland Recreation. Meeting was called to order at 5:31 PM. The Human Resources Committee met on the day listed above to revisit the Rutland City Alderman Social Media Guidance Document and discuss the guidance that has been workshopped amongst members of the committee, the city attorney, and Rutland City Human Resources. The document contained guidance on how Aldermen may be cautioned on their social media usage due to their nature as an elected official, due to existing statutes and guidance from the Vermont League of Cities and Town, as well as drawing on inspiration from other municipalities. This document contained a how-to guide for social media for newly elected officials, as well as outlining the policy regarding the Freedom of Information Act when utilizing one's personal social media for public official business, as well as provided context on what city guidance may be for Aldermen when choosing to post on social media. These sections were gone over and discussed in depth by the committee. Ultimately, it was decided by the committee the policy was not conclusive enough, lacking in guidance regarding certain types of hate speech on social media. The issue remains in committee for further discussion, and the meeting adjourned at 6:37 PM.
Thank you. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Seeing none, do board members have any miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderman McClure?
I'm not sure if this would have technically fallen under old business, as it is revisiting the event permit for Rutland City events. I had a few different folks reach out to me in the last two weeks claiming that they felt they were not given proper notice of street closures for events that are closing down streets, and I am aware that there is a section in our event permit that checks a box and tells people that they need to notify, but it does not ask what their plans for notification for businesses on a street, or neighbors, or anything like that, of a street to be closed. So I would like to move, I would like to make a motion to move the discussion of neighbor notification, business notification for street closures of events permits. I believe Community and Economic Development would be the appropriate place to send that, but I would, I would take recommendations on where else that should go.
Second to that motion? All right, so we have a motion to refer discussion of communication regarding street closures for special event permits to the Community and Economic Development Committee. It has been seconded, any discussion or debate on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderman McCann?
Thanks. So after the last board meeting, I received an email from Carol Wright, who is a resident of Rutland City. I wanted to read her email, so it was included in the public record. Her message read as follows. Hello, sorry I wasn't able to attend Monday's meeting in person, I would like to share my support of the road diet. Several years ago, my car was rear-ended while I was trying to turn left off of Woodstock Avenue into the bagel shop. I feel speeding and distracted driving are increasing, parentheses, also on North Main, which add to the challenge of turning left without a designated turn lane. Please continue with the road diet plan, thank you for your consideration. That's the end for...
Thank you. Any additional miscellaneous motions or resolutions or new business? All right, we have an executive session on the agenda. Attorney LaChance, would you read the language?
Yes, one moment. Sorry, I have it on my phone and not handwritten, so just give me one second to pull that up. Okay. So we're looking for a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding security or emergency response measures, the disclosure of which could jeopardize public safety. And this is in regards to, I believe, some information to be provided to us by Police Chief Kilkellin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to go into executive session to discussion, issue of public safety, it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And who should be included in the executive session?
Sorry, that was just the motion to find the information was. The motion for executive session is motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, city clerk, chief of police, and city attorney to discuss upcoming security and emergency response measures as allowed under Title 1, Section 313A10.
So moved.
Second. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.